We're about to open this meeting at the Gillen County Court Special Session. It's Wednesday, August 29th, 9:00 AM at the Gillen County Courthouse. This is a Genova Public Hearing continued from August 15th. It's on the following matter. It's the Phillipi Canyon Quarry, the Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, P-2018-01, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, T-2018-01, Zoning Map Amendment, number Z-2018-01, Site Development Plan. This is a time that was previously set aside for the continuance of a public hearing for an application submitted by the Oregon Department of Transportation for a post-acknowledgement plan amendment to gain further protection of an existing 32.7 acre aggregate site. To protect the Phillipi Canyon Quarry under Goal Five rules for aggregate sites, ODOT is requesting that Gillen County amend the Gillen County Comprehensive Plan and include the quarry in the Goal Five Comprehensive Plan map of inventory of aggregate and mineral resources and amend the zoning map to add to the site to the significant resource combining zone. In addition, ODOT is requesting site development plan approval to operate the Phillipi Canyon Quarry for the upcoming I-84 maintenance project. The Phillipi Canyon Quarry is located along Quinton Canyon Road near Interstate 84 exit 123. It is a tax lot 100, northwest quarter section six, T-2 North, R-19 East, WN Gillen County on the land zone exclusive farm use in Gillen County. At the August 15th public hearing, oral and written testimony was submitted into the record. A continuance was requested and granted at the end of the August 15th meeting. The record was kept open and new written testimony was accepted for a period of seven days. Opponents submitted additional testimony during this time and it is now included in the record. Then the applicant, ODOT, had the opportunity to rebut any new evidence submitted during the continuance. ODOT has elected not to submit a rebuttal. The record is now closed. No additional testimony, comments, or questions will be heard from the applicant or the opponents at this time. The county court is able to ask questions of staff and contracted staff. The county court will deliberate on the matter. The county court will base their decision on all of the information in the record at this time. The public hearing procedures and applicable laws and ordinances were read at the August 15th public hearing. In addition, the qualifications of decision makers was completed at the August 15th public hearing and there were no objections to any of the county court members participating in this decision. Therefore, we will not go through those procedures again. First, the contract staff planner Nick Kramer will give us a presentation and go through the applicable criteria and answer any questions the county court -- any questions from the county court. Second, the county court will determine if they have adequate information to make a decision on this matter. Third, if the county court is unable to make a decision based on the determination that they need additional information from either the applicant or the opponents, the county court may continue the hearing to a time and date certain and reopen the record for further testimony from both the opponents and proponents. Or, if the county court determines they have adequate information to make a decision, then the county court will deliberate, make a tentative decision to approve or deny the application. The county court will then direct staff to prepare revised findings, notice of decision, and potentially enabling ordinances, all of which would be adopted at the subsequent county court meeting and result in a final decision. Now, these are the rules for this public hearing. Please silence your cell phones. This hearing is being recorded. All those in attendance are asked to sign the attendance sheet. And please refrain from demonstrations in support of either side. No clapping, cheering, jeering will be allowed. We ask that you be curious and orderly in this hearing. These are the rules. Do you have any questions? Okay. All right. At this time, I want to -- will hear from Nick and get started on -- great. Today's agenda.
Okay. So I've prepared a presentation and we're going to go through the staff report. It's basically the staff report up on the PowerPoint so everyone in the room can see. And at each step, the way this process is laid out in your ordinance is stepwise. And so we'll go through each step and each criteria. I've tried to highlight where the opponents are contending that the criteria isn't met and where ODOT is contending it is met. And we can discuss at each step. So let's kick into it here. So we did just go through the meeting process. Again, I want to encourage you to ask questions of me or Ruben throughout. And then if it starts to appear that you need a lot more information to make the decision, what I'd recommend is we start to put together a really specific list of what you need, what information is needed. And then we would continue the hearing, ask for a written response to it, and go that route instead of getting back into -- unless you choose to have more oral testimony and getting into the continuance cycle. So, next slide, please. There was new information submitted during the continuance. Killington Law Group letter was referencing DLCD comments on noise impacts and cow calf operations. The other letter from Killington Law Group was focused on the noise generated by blasting preparation and other work above the quarry floor. And they contend that those noise impacts weren't addressed in the ODOT noise impact report. And then the Oregon Farm Bureau also submitted a follow-up on the cow calf impacts and DLCD comments. And as already stated, ODOT did not submit a rebuttal and feel that they've addressed all these issues. So, the record is closed. You're basing this decision on what's in that record now.
This is the second letter from the Farm Bureau?
Yes. And it basically said that they are in favor, and it should be in your packet, but it basically said they stand by their initial comments and they had concerns about the DLCD comments coming from not the farm expert in these DLCD. Okay. So another thing I wanted to go over here is that we are considering both the post-acknowledgement plan amendment, the PAPA, as we call them in the planning world, to the comp plan, the zoning amendments, and the site development permit. So each time this use would -- each future -- if you approve the PAPA and the zoning amendments, each time this use came forward, it would have to go through the site development permit step. And at that step, the planning director would apply the conditions of the zoning amendments and the PAPA. And that's an administrative decision. At each time, there's an active proposed use. So I just wanted to get that across, that we -- this time, we're combining them, but in the future, if it were to be approved, it would come up for review at that site development permit step. All right. Okay. So this -- I'm going to go right into the criteria. The first 13 pages of the staff report are project descriptions and addressing what was required in the application. This is where your zoning ordinance kicks into the stepwise process for Goal Five. And so we're going to go through each one of these. I've highlighted in red where the opponents have contentions and green where ODOT contends otherwise. So, the first step in the process is determine whether application filed may be deemed complete. So the application was deemed complete January 24, 2018. The opponents contend it should never have been deemed complete and was missing information. They -- okay, go on to the next one. So step two, determine site significance and classification. Director is told to determine whether an aggregate site is significant or non-significant site. The main criteria here is whether or not it has over 500,000 tons of aggregate potential. The opponents contend that the material submitted for quantity and quality was not adequate. ODOT contends that they met this standard. The -- if you go to the next slide, I just put these up here. This is the lab report that shows that there is, in fact, the quality of rock that ODOT needs and the quantity of rock is around nine point -- or 986,800 cubic yards, which equates to approximately 1,480,000 tons. And further clarification from ODOT was that about 5,000 cubic yards of material was removed for the minor realignment project, but that the remaining material is well over the 500,000 ton threshold for Goal Five. So if you want to go back, Sandy. So in the bottom here, I have -- this is, does the county court have sufficient information to determine the quality and quantity of the resource? So that -- this is kind of the way I have it laid out. So you can -- if you have questions about this, I think this is the most straightforward one to talk about in this way. As your contract staff, I reviewed the information, made a call that it was adequate information submitted by ODOT. If you feel otherwise and need -- or if you follow the contentions of the opponents and feel that ODOT needs to submit more information or what they haven't submitted shows that it could be considered significant site, now would be the time to bring that up. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So any thoughts there, or should we keep moving on?
Well, you know, I really wasn't sure what kind of process the two of you might want to -- we can go through the whole thing and then come back and, you know, comment after, you know, we can come back to this slide again, I guess. You want to do that? We'll go through the whole thing. How about that?
Yeah, that's fine.
And we'll come back to this particular slide, Sandy.
If we need to.
If we need to.
Yep. Okay, great. So, and I'll move forward with how my original -- my original take, recommendation on this criteria and--
So let me, I guess, before we go any farther, if, for instance, we claim that -- or we make the decision that there isn't enough information to determine the quality and quantity of the resource, then is there any reason for us to go any farther? So we really need to make this decision right now to--
The way it is laid out is pretty stepwise. So if, yeah, if you determine that they don't have the information submitted does not prove that, then it's not eligible for a significant site and application denied.
Okay. All right. So really, I mean, there's no reason to go on with the rest of the slides unless we're in agreement with this. Is there significant material there based on the information that we have?
What I believe there looks fairly straightforward. There's more than half material material significant site.
I do.
Yeah. I -- there was a letter that come from Killington that questioned that.
Yeah. The letter from Killington had contentions with that the -- it included a nearby site, Blue Rock Quarry--
Right.
-- in addition to this site. And this site, I'm going -- this is a lab report from ODOT. It's in a big -- ODOT provided the county with a big binder of materials that they did lab reports on most of the -- all of their aggregate sites throughout the county and even private sites to show which ones -- how much they have, what's the quality of the rock.
So Ruben, I guess my question would be, you know, it's a he said, she said kind of situation here. I believe it's up to the applicant to supply the information that says that there's enough material here of which they have, in my opinion. Now, you know--
It is up to the applicant to make that initial showing. The -- anyone that is an opponent of the project, excuse me, is welcome to submit contrary information.
Okay.
And it's up to you as the finder of fact here to determine which one holds the most weight and make a determination based on what's been submitted.
Yeah.
So it's just a -- they've -- ODOT's provided what they have, the opponents have provided what they have, and it's up to you to decide which one you believe is most accurate in applying.
I don't remember seeing anything of significance like this that--
From the opponent.
From the opponent. But I -- there was a comparison to a pit that was close by, which didn't produce what was anticipated. I remember it's a lot of this was a -- I mean, there was a ton of information to come to us and it's--
Yes. I'm trying to find the exact -- it's from the June 26, 2018 letter. That'd be easier to find here. Rock, okay. Rock, it's on page 21 of that letter. Do you want me to just read out?
Yeah, please do. Yeah, I think so.
Okay. "Rock samples are not representative of an area to be mined. The OAR states that a representative set of samples of aggregate material deposit on the site that show in relevant part that the site meets applicable ODOT specifications for base rock for air degradation, abrasion, and soundness. Nothing in the record establishes that the 2008 sampling taken at a totally different part of the ODOT property is representative as required. Of the rock at the subject's 32 acre site, ODOT seeks a determination of significance based on a sample." And this goes to a footnote. "The record includes two sample tests, but only one is from the subject Phillipi site. The others for the blue bucket quarry, which is different. The one sample that you have taken is 10 years ago from a totally different part of the property. There's no evidence in the record to support ODOT and staff's claim that it is representative. No one can dispute it is not representative of the subject 32 acre site. Planning commission cannot find that the site is significant because ODOT has made no effort to carry its burden to prove its samples representative, that the representative sample would meet the requirements." And it goes on further. "Inadequate evidence of rock quantity. The OAR requires applicant to prove that the quantity of rock which is to have designated as significant is at least 500,000 tons. Here, ODOT, to satisfy the standard, tells us the quantity standard is met from analysis accomplished 10 years ago before significant mining occurred. This is simply nothing that suggests that there is the 2008 amount of material at the 32 acre site. Nothing says the evaluation area for the 2008 study is still there or has anything to do with the subject 32 acre site. There has been no analysis of the current quantity of rock available in the 32 acres that they want to add to the significant sites. As such, ODOT has failed to carry its burden to establish the site as significant as a threshold matter, and its application must be denied on this basis." So ODOT's response to that was that there has not been significant amount of material removed other than for the minor realignment since 2008. And there's been no major changes to the rock there since 2008. The OAR doesn't have any time limits on studies. And it is a sample from the site that are contending that it is from a different part of the site. The OAR are not that specific in what I'm reading.
Excuse me. This is Amanda Pumpin at the LPD and I apologize for breaking in, but I just got an email from Stacy Postgate, ODOT attorney, and she is looking to be tapped in for the conference call.
Yeah, I tried her twice earlier, got busy signals. Are you guys okay with me trying again?
Yeah, let's give her a try. I think it's appropriate.
Thank you.
Amanda Pumpin? She's with the Department of Conservation and Development.
Who else?
It was Stacy Postgate.
Amanda?
Yeah. Yeah. My introduction's up. Amanda? Amanda, this is Judge Schaefer.
That's on here.
We keep trying Stacy's number and it keeps coming back busy.
Okay. All right. I was just telling them it's not working out.
Well--
Wait a second. Can you tell them they used the wrong number the last time? It is 503-947-4542.
Good morning, Stacy. This is Gillen County Judge Steve Schaefer. I'm sorry we had the wrong number. We've been trying to call you for a while and I got nothing but a busy signal. So, thank you for joining.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. That was my fault. I was trying to type it in on a smartphone while my computer went down. It hurt. So I gave you the wrong number. So thank you. I appreciate you trying me again.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. Amanda, did we have you back?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, all right. I believe we've got everybody on the line now, so I think we'll continue with where we were at, if you can remember where we were at.
Yes. Yep. So that's the opponent's contention. You have ODOT's response in the record that they feel they have adequately supplied you with the information that shows that it meets the threshold. My recommendation is that what information I have shows that it meets the threshold. There was not information submitted that goes otherwise. This is how this thing is going to go. It's just back and forth on disputing the facts--
Okay.
-- and parsing out the details of that.
And it's up to you to determine credibility in the way of the evidence.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. Based on the information that I see at this particular time, I believe that it's got 986,800 cubic yards of material there. Anybody disagreeing with--
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, great. Okay. Let's get -- the other -- so I'm -- another thing I did here was pulled out the main contended issues with the criteria. So, on to step three. And this one is where it gets very complicated. Okay, step three, identify the impact area in all conflicts with existing uses. So that the director shall identify the impact area for the purpose of identifying conflicts with the proposed mining and processing activities. The impact area shall be large enough to include the uses listed in subsection B of this section and shall be limited to 1,500 feet from the boundaries of the proposed mining area, and this is underlined, except where factual information is adequate to indicate significant potential conflicts beyond this distance. B, for proposed expansion of an existing site, the impact area shall be measured from the perimeter of the proposed expansion area rather than the boundaries of the existing site. Two, you prepare a map showing the impact area. That's the infamous map that we produced showing the 1,500 feet from the site. Then you identify the known conflicting uses within that area. And you prepare a staff report to address those conflicts. So this is where it gets stepwise on us. We -- the opponents are contending that the impact area should be extended up to seven miles due to the impacts on the road closures and detours. So they're saying because of that road closure, every house that uses Quinton Canyon Road is impacted, and so that the impact area should expand out to seven miles. Then you address all the conflicts in that seven miles. They're also contending that the impact area should be extended to assess noise impacts to the Mies residents. So that letter was submitted at the August 15th hearing where they have, from DSA, who's a consultant on noise measuring and impacts, claims that the Mies residents would be impacted and that there's evidence in ODOT's noise report that shows that there could be impacts there and that the impact area should be expanded to include that area and addressed in the noise impact. Opponents contend that impacts from noise, dust, vibration, and air polluting chemicals extend beyond the 1,500 feet. And that -- and so that's the -- so before we go to the next one, that's their contention to expand the impact area circle. The other part is their opponents are contending that noise impacts cows should be considered as a conflicting use. So we'll get into this in detail later, but my original recommendation is looking at dwellings as conflicting uses, other types of uses relating to people, not agriculture. So all the back and forth in the record is trying to show whether or not there's an impact to cows and therefore impact to agriculture, and that's a -- that is a conflicting use there. ODOT contends they've provided evidence that shows the impact area should remain at 1,500 feet and that the cows should not be considered a conflicting use and that there's not evidence showing that the cows will be impacted. So here's one of those stepwise things where we need to determine whether or not to expand the impact area beyond 1,500 feet.
Right.
And we can come back to this once we look at what the conflicting uses are. But this impacts how we move forward in steps. So if you decide to expand it, like I said, we're going to have to then expand the whole area we're looking in and look at all those uses in that area. Currently, I've kept the impact area to 1,500 feet. And that's up to you to determine whether there's factual information to warrant extending that impact area. So let's come back to this one, unless you have questions on this now. So the other thing with the impact area is if it were to pass, the uses are limited in that impact area. So there's a little bit of a catch-22 here is if you-- So, there's a little bit of a catch-22 here, is if you expand the area to consider all the conflicts, still go forward with approving it, then you have this big area to regulate within and keep conflicting uses out of. So, I hope that'll become more clear. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so, step three B. Identify all conflicts from existing and approved uses in the impact area. The decision-maker shall identify all existing approved land uses within the impact area that will be adversely affected by proposed mining. Decision-makers shall specify conflicts from existing or approved uses that are able to be reasonably predicted, and for the purposes of the subsection, approved land uses or dwellings allowed by residential zone, on existing planted lots, and other uses for which conditional or final approvals have been granted by Gillum County. Consideration of conflicts that could be caused by the mining shall be limited to conflicts due to noise, dust, or other discharges with regard to those existing and approved uses and associated activities that are sensitive to such discharges. So, this area, again, is an EFU zone. If you limit it to the 1,500 feet, there are not noise-sensitive uses, such as dwellings, houses, schools, within the 1,500 feet. If you expand the impact area beyond there, then we do have those types of uses there, and we would have to identify the conflicts with them. And that comes back to the MEEES residents example of the opponents contending that there will be noise impacts there, so we would need those to be addressed.
Doesn't step three B also include conflicts regarding the road?
Yeah, so that's the next... So, let's just look what I have here. And sorry, there's so many words on here, but I'm just trying to get it all up there, and I knew you all wouldn't have packets in front of you, so I hope this is not too small. Again, the opponents contend the impact area should be expanded. ODOT contends that they've provided evidence that shows the impact area should remain at 1,500 feet, and the cows should not be considered a conflicting use. Okay, next slide. So, this is within that same step three of identifying the impact area and all conflicts with existing uses. So, step three B, part B. Identify potential conflicts to local roads used for access and egress to the mining site within one mile of the entrance to the mining site, unless a greater distance is necessary to include the intersection with the nearest arterial identified in the transportation plan. So, the access to the site is within a mile of 84, so we don't need to expand the area. So, it is there. Part one, conflicts with local roads should be determined based on clear and objective standards regarding site distances, road capacity, cross-section elements, horizontal, vertical alignment, and similar items in the transportation plan and county code. Two, standards for trucks associated with mining operations shall be equivalent to standards for other trucks of equivalent size, weight, and capacity. So, that second one is more of a urban issue where residential areas don't want big trucks on their residential streets or local streets. So, that one is not an issue. Number one there, though, is an area of contention. So, the opponents contend that a traffic impact study should have been completed, and that the GOAL 12 transportation is not met, but with Quinton Canyon Road closed. So, they're saying when you close the road, you remove all functional classification of that road because it's closed. The opponents also claim the detour on Heritage Road is not adequate. So, there's a lot of information from the opponents claiming that Heritage Road is not an adequate detour. And this is a critical decision point for you all to decide whether, based on clear and objective standards, whether Heritage is an adequate detour, and whether the impacts of the mining use would reduce the road capacity to an insufficient level. So, in other words, when it's active, inactive use, and you have 150 to 200 trucks a day, will it completely debilitate the transportation system in that area? Is one question. And then the other question is, is the detour road adequate to supply a detour? So, ODOT contends Heritage Detour is adequate, and it's proposed to be improved to Minor Collector in the TSP. Both these roads are considered local roads now, but proposed to be improved in the future. ODOT contends there are no conflicts with site distances, et cetera. In other words, that both roads are wide enough and have the ability to handle the type of truck traffic that's going to be on those roads. ODOT estimated between, in the springtime, around 19 ADTs, which is average daily trips, and in 2014, for the transportation system plan, they did a study that found 67 ADTs. So, the... So, you need to determine whether Heritage can handle up to 67 ADTs, average daily trips, and whether it's adequate for that, and whether or not you're going to debilitate the whole system by allowing the number of trips that this will produce. So, I'll give you my take now. So, the traffic impact study is not required directly in your zoning ordinance that I can see. Your GOAL 12 and your comprehensive... Your GOAL 12 and your comprehensive plan doesn't specifically say when transportation impact studies should be done. You have, in my opinion, with the ODOT estimates and trips, you have what you want, what you would get out of a traffic impact study. You want to understand how many... What's the seasonality of the trips there? How many trips are really happening in this stretch of road? So, my recommendation is what they've submitted is adequate to show that. A traffic impact study could show that the number of trips produced by the active use of the quarry does debilitate the system, but what ODOT's claiming is because it's such a short route, it's just less than a mile, I think it's less than a half mile from the processing area to 84, that there's no way that's going to be debilitating the system. It's going to be on that very short section. And then further, you can't assess impacts on interstates. So, as one of the opponent's contentions was that it would overwhelm the interstate interchange, which you can't consider, actually, and the OAR spells that out. So, this is... I mean, this is one of the issues at the heart of the matter, right? With, does the road closure itself make the road somehow... Does that... Is that not legal to close the road for that long, and does it reduce the capacity of the road to zero, and therefore, you shouldn't allow this? That's what the opponents are contending. ODOT's contending that you still haven't had a quick detour route during that time, and that roads are allowed to be closed throughout your county for different projects.
And Nick, I don't want to throw up your order here or anything, but is it appropriate for the commissioners to consider ways to mitigate it, putting on conditions, and deciding that this is... Can be approved?
Yeah, that's the next step.
Okay.
Yeah, so, right now, we're identifying the conflicts, and we're basically trying to measure the conflicts. And then, once we agree on what the conflicts are, we'll talk about the mitigation measures such as the detour, the seasonality of the closing. Yeah, we'll get to those.
So, identifying that there is a conflict doesn't mean that we're done, and that's it. It just... It gives us the waypoints to go over here.
Yeah. And this one, the opponents are contending there's just not adequate information for you to assess how big that conflict is.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, next one. And this is like slide five of 50, so bear with me on these. It's a complicated process. Step three, we're still in step three. Identify all conflicts from existing and approved uses, conflicts with other GOAL V resource sites within the impact area that are shown on a list of acknowledged, list of significant resources for which the requirements of GOAL V have been completed at the time the plan amendment is initiated. So, this is where we get into the Basalt Cliffs question. So, the opponents are contending that Basalt Cliffs are a GOAL V resource site. ODOT contends that the Basalt Cliffs are not a projected GOAL V resource site. My finding is that the Basalt Cliffs have not been gone through the GOAL V process. They've not gone through the ESE analysis to be identified as a natural resource. So, this is straight out of your comp plan. It says, "With the exception of aggregate resource sites, riparian habitat areas, historic resources, no such resources have been identified as needing county protection." So, in other words, those... You can look at GOAL V resource sites, aggregate resource sites, which there are none in the 1,500-foot impact area. This is our first GOAL V aggregate.
Protection.
Riparian habitat areas, which there are none, that are protected under GOAL V, and historic resources, which refers to historic, not cultural, resources, is my interpretation of that, and there are not any in this area. So, clearly, the Basalt Cliffs are not to be understood as a conflict because of a GOAL V resource. Okay? Next one, please. Okay, identify all conflicts from existing and approved uses in the impact area. This is the last one here, is conflicts with agricultural practices. So, opponents contend that there are significant impacts with agricultural practices. This is where the impact of noise to cows comes in. They contend there's impacts to invasive weeds spreading. They have a lot of information showing... Explaining the conflicts with agricultural uses. ODOT contends that those impacts are adequately minimized, which we'll go into in the next step. So, again, this is... You'll need to apply the standard that is highlighted in green, the ORS 215296, to show that there's not a force of a significant change in accepted farm or forest practices on surrounding lands devoted to farm or forest use, or a significant increase in the cost of accepted farm or forest practices on surrounding lands devoted to farm or forest use. So, this is a contentious issue that you'll need to decide on whether... On what impacts, what conflicts to consider, and then if they can be adequately minimized. So, let's go to the next step. Okay, so now we're on to step four, determine whether conflicts can be minimized. So, once we've established what the conflicts are, now we're going to determine whether they can be minimized. If they cannot be minimized, you can deny the application based on that. If the conflict can be minimized, then the decision-makers shall identify reasonable and practical measures that would minimize the conflicts. In other words, conditions of approval. All right, so, next slide. Okay, so, I summarized what mitigation, what conflicts can be minimized. So, I've grouped them into mitigation measures for the Quinton Canyon Road closures. So, to remind you, there's a few distinct steps that ODOT has laid out that they do at every active use of the quarry. They're proposing to blast rock off the wall during the winter months, winter to spring, and the road to be closed for three weeks at that time, and they push the material over into the processing area. The road reopens and is... Both lanes open after that. And then, in the summertime, they have an active use of the quarry with a batch plant and the 150 to 200 trucks per day going in and out to do the actual paving maintenance work on I-84. So, the mitigations for the road closures are seasonality, or what I've considered in the staff report, seasonality. Can we find a time where they will not have impacts on conflicting uses? We've gone back and forth on what that window of time is for closures. Number two mitigation, provide a reasonable detour. So, ensure that Heritage is a reasonable detour. Provide adequate notice and ongoing communication. So, we have a condition that they provide 45-day notice to the property owners and local agencies and first responders, et cetera. And then, improvements to detour roads, so that they have to maintain the detour roads to an adequate standard, that if there's impacts to them from this extra traffic, it has to be improved to the county roadmaster's approval. Mitigation measures for Quinton Canyon Road impacts. So, this refers more to the active operation of the quarry when you're... When they're doing the maintenance project and the road, and Quinton Canyon Road, the impacts there. So, again, 45... ODOT needs to report operational plans to the county roadmaster, get approval from the county roadmaster. The county roadmaster can request a detailed engineering analysis from ODOT to show that Quinton Canyon Road will be functional after the active quarry use is completed for each project, and that ODOT must complete road repairs after each active use to ensure the roadway is in a sufficient condition. The work shall be completed before the reopening of Quinton Canyon Road approved by the county roadmaster to ensure all road users... Ensure safety in mitigating impacts to the surface of the road. Okay, so, that's where I focused my efforts in this, was how to address the road conflicts. Those are the major conflicts that I recognized when I did the staff report. The opponents have proposed all kinds of conflicts due to noise, dust, air pollution, impacts to cows. Their claim on seasonality is that basically, there's not a good season, there's not a window, that the windows proposed are too large, and it will impact them. So, if you find that the... If you agree with the opponents that there are additional conflicts, there's potential mitigation measures that could be proposed to minimize them. So, this is that stepwise thing. So, once we go back and you determine what the conflicts are, we can come here and then say, what's some ways to minimize them? Okay, next slide. Okay, so, this one is specifically to, again, the ORS, conflicts with agricultural practices. So, these are the... This is the standard you need to use when addressing agricultural practices. My recommendation was that the periodic road closures and potential impacts may temporarily impact farm uses in the area, however the mitigation measures can mitigate, minimize these impacts. The opponents are claiming there's not a way to minimize the impacts, and it should be denied based on this criteria. So, this one is a little... This is confusing. This is step... Still in step four, determine whether conflicts can be minimized. This is straight... This is straight out of your zoning ordinance, recording a waiver of remonstrance in compliance with Section 11130 is evidence that a conflict has been minimized under 820 or resolved. So if a, if a few, you have your 1,500, this assumes a 1,500-foot impact area, if there's a proposed dwelling within that area, the dwelling could be allowed, but the dwelling would have to sign a waiver of remonstrance that says they will not pursue a claim for release for cause of action alleging from injury from mining within their, the significant resource zone. So the opponents contend that this is illegal, and that it was some mean-spirited attempt by me to do something here. This is verbatim from your zoning ordinance. So if it's illegal, zoning ordinance is legal in stating this. I, I have to follow the zoning ordinance and what's in there. I see the purpose of this, it makes, it makes logical sense to me. I'm unsure whether it is illegal at some other level, constitutional level or not. You use waivers of remonstrance to protect agricultural uses, so someone can't contend that they're being, if they put in a non-farm dwelling, for example, in a heavily farmed area, they sign a waiver of remonstrance that says, "I will not claim injury because of the farm practice." This is the same concept, but it's applied for the mining site.
But now, you said you were assuming the 1,500-foot area.
Yeah.
And so...
So if you extend it to seven miles, every proposed use is going to have to sign this waiver of remonstrance in that seven miles. That's where that catch-22 comes with. If you extend the impact area to a really large area and approve it, you're, that's going to be a, you're going to have to implement that, this step. Okay, next step. Okay, so we skip to step six. Okay, so, "The decision makers shall protect the resource site and approve an application if no conflicts were identified under Section 8190." So that doesn't apply. We've identified some conflicts, we need to further identify them, narrow them down. Number two, "All identified conflicts with significant aggregate resource site are minimized pursuant to 820, or based on an ECEE analysis conducted pursuant to 8210. Mining is permitted without limitations." So opponents contend that, again, they contend that they can't be minimized. ODOT contends that the conflicts are minimized. We'll need a determination on that. Okay, next step. Step seven, determine the post-mining use of the site. The post-mining use of the site is laid out in the Dogami permit, where there's a site reclamation plan to return the site after mining to a natural state for wildlife, habitat, and grazing land. So this one's pretty straightforward. Step eight, identify conflicts from potential future uses. So this is where we get into what could be allowed in this area. Identify predicted conflicts from those potential future uses, and limit those uses to ones that if approved would be allowed outright in underlying zoning district. So in other words, you can't look at conditional uses, you have to really look at the allowed uses. You can't assume stuff that may or may not ever happen. It has to be the outright allowed uses. So what I've laid out in the staff report, I went through your permitted uses and your planning director's use, uses, and identified which could be potentially conflicting uses. Dwellings in conjunction with farm use, accessory dwellings in conjunction with the farm use, churches, temporary workforce housing. So basically, these are mostly dwelling-type uses, aside from churches. And the opponents contend that the farm use itself is a conflict. So they're, they're kind of, they're back at the earlier step, saying that the types of agricultural uses in this area, agricultural practice in this area, is in itself in conflict, and they're, and you, that will be a future use in the area. You have to show how you're going to minimize conflicts. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so this is where you analyze the ESEE, economic, social...
Environmental.
Environmental. And there's another E in there. Okay, so I went, sorry, economic, social, environmental, energy consequences. So I go through that in the criteria, and this is the economic consequences of the future uses. So I'm addressing in the criteria just the dwelling uses, and my, my take on it is there's very limited potential for dwellings in this area because it's EFU with a very large minimum lot size. The opponents would, are saying the economic consequences of the future uses are impacted because of the impacts on agriculture. Social consequences of future uses, the S part, again, they, I'm saying there's not a large social consequence because there is a limited potential for new houses in this area, there's not a lot of activity, social base activity. Environmental consequences of future uses. So this is where the opponents are claiming that there's going to be environmental impacts to groundwater, to air pollution from batch plant. That, again, you all have to determine whether those conflicts are, should be considered here. And then energy consequences, of which I don't see major energy consequences here. That would be for some, some big, you know, factory that's using lots of energy, is where I would apply that. And then again, it talks here about requiring the recording of a waiver of remonstrance to show that evidence that conflict has been minimized. So that's where we come back to, any future use that's allowed, that we identify that could be a conflicting use, would have to sign the waiver to be located in the impact area.
The key there is future use, and you can't force someone to sign a waiver of remonstrance for something that they already have.
Correct.
Unless they voluntarily want to do that, but it's a future proposed use, then we would have authority to require that.
Step 10. This is where you would adopt the final decision in implementing amendments. So this is if you find that you identified the conflicts, you identified how they can be minimized, and now you are protecting the site. You would adopt the, it to your inventory of Goal V protected sites that's located in your comp plan, and be on a map as well. And the second step is a program to protect the resource. So you would apply the significant resource overlay zone over the impact area, require proposed uses in there, and sign the waiver, and allow the site to be used as long as they're meeting the conditions, and they come back to you for the site development permit, any check. Yes, and that the approved post-mining use is set. Okay, next one. Step 10B, amend the zoning map, I've kind of got ahead of myself here, amend the zoning map to apply the significant overlay zone. Show the mining area, show the impact area on that map. We have that draft map, that's part of the record. If you decide to extend the impact area, then we need to do a new map that shows where, how far it extends, and et cetera. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this now goes, so we've gone through the Goal V steps. Now this goes into approval criteria for any amendments. This is out of Section 10050, your zoning ordinance. And any amendment must show that proposed changes conform with the comprehensive plan. So I previously didn't go through each goal in detail in the staff report, but I put together this so we can, and this could be included in the findings. Okay, Goal 1, citizen involvement. The land use process is following the citizen involvement policies detailed in the comp plan and procedures in zoning ordinance. So that's math. Goal 2, land use planning, requires that local land use decisions are based on factual evidence and follow a policy framework, which is basically your zoning ordinance. I thought this policy was relevant to bring up. It states that comprehensive plan policies are not to be viewed, are to be viewed as guiding statements, but are not mandatory approval criteria that will be applied to individual land use applications. The planned policies are implemented through the zoning, land division, and transportation regulations. So I bring this one up because of there's the contention about the basalt cliffs, and whether there's, there's a policy that states you should consider all mining sites before allowing the basalt cliffs to be mined. And it's, the, the policy is not implemented through your zoning ordinance. So the way I read this is, you're not, it's not intended to be using comp plan policies to apply them like they are criteria in your zoning ordinance. And it's not, in your comp plan, a lot of your policies are not clear and objective. They're guiding, and they're, they're aspirational. So I wanted to point that out, this is stated this way here. You could find, though, so that's, that's my take on it, it's probably ODOT's take on it, too. You could side with the opponents and say, no, we don't feel that this goal is met because this policy is written the way it is. And we'll get, we'll look at that specific language, but I wanted to point that out here. Okay, Goal 3, agricultural lands. Purpose of Goal 3 is to preserve and maintain agricultural lands. Policies are intended to support the state's agricultural land use policy, it should be so interpreted and construed. So in other words, apply that, whether it's a significant impact, that, that language from the ORS is really what your Goal 3 is. Goal 4, properties not considered for or science, that's not applicable. Okay, here's into Goal 5, natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces. The county must complete the ESEE analysis for all natural resources. Said analysis has been completed and hereby adopted. And this is that line, "However, with the exception of aggregate, riparian, historic, no such resources have been identified as needing county protection." So the basalt cliffs are not protected here. Finding number 16 from the comp plan, "All active aggregate sources are being inventoried and identified," and they're in an inventory that's located in your comp plan. "It compares an estimated total volume of aggregate from these sources to the estimated needs for committed or projected construction projects. Requiring such material clearly indicates that sufficient quantities are available to meet such needs." So in other words, saying you have a list of aggregate sites, which we have the map that we put up last time, and that you have plenty of quantity to meet your needs in the county. Finding 17, "It is the policy of Gillum County to fully protect significant mineral and aggregate resource sites by determining the ESEE consequences of not allowing conflicting uses to occur within the impact area." So that's what we're doing. Next slide. This is, this is a lot of work done here, but this is the policy that's in contention about the basalt cliffs. So the, midway down there, basalt outcroppings of the area generally should be left in their natural state, and only under particularly justifiable circumstances will county approval of mining of potentially scenic hill sites be given. County's policy on mining may require search for suitable alternative sites for mining should any major construction project occur. Therefore, the county shall cooperate, coordinate with Dogami, carry out an inventory of the county, and when the inventory is completed, it shall be adopted as a component of this plan. So we are, this is part of that Dogami step. We have the binder with all this information of what resources are out there. Originally, the proposal was to adopt them all at once, and now we're going through one at a time to adopt them. The wording around the basalt outcroppings is, they should be left in their natural state, only under particularly justifiable circumstances will the county approve mining. To me, that's a really difficult phrase to interpret, and should be interpreted in your zoning ordinance with criteria. The county's policy on mining may require such, first, search for suitable alternative sites for mining operations. So I, it, this is up for interpretation, like I said, so that's why I pointed out that your comp plan says you shouldn't use these policies to apply directly, individual applications, they should be implemented through the zoning ordinance. If you have different interpretations of that, or agree with what the contentions are of the opponents, I'm all, I'm all ears on that, I'm happy to write findings that support that. Like, this is a critical part, I keep hearing lots of questions about basalt cliffs and how to deal with this comp plan policy. Okay, next one. So further policies, and there is conflict, this happens a lot in comp plans, there's just directly conflicting policies. So appropriate protection measures shall be, shall be implemented and adopted to ensure continued availability of such sites. Requirements OAR 66023, which is the Goal V process, shall be followed, and the county will continue to process applications for post-acknowledgement plan amendments to add sites when site-specific information is available. So your policies show that the steps for protecting the Goal V, what we're doing right now, but that basalt policy, basalt cliffs protection policy has that subjective language in there that's, that you need to interpret. Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
All right. On to Goal 6, and I'm, I'm going through these in detail because the, the June letter from the opponents did have a lot of contentions about comp plan Goal V. So Goal 6, air-water-lane resources quality, primary purpose is to maintain and prove air-water-lane resources state. So I pulled the policies 2, 3, 4, 5 out. So I pulled the policies two, three, four, five out here. So you should continue to require compliance with state federal regulations, continue to support local, regional, federal activities directed at maintenance improvement in water quality supportive of regional, state, federal programs. It shall be the policy of the county to rely on such environmentally related regulations and programs in the review of development permits concerning land use activities related thereto, rather than attempting to develop local regulations concerning such matters. Such reliance shall continue until it's proven that state federal regulations are adequate. So following the policies of the comprehensive plan, you must rely on DEQ, Dogami, ODF, and W and other agencies to ensure protection of air, water, and quality. So I bring this up because there's a lot of contentions about groundwater impacts, air pollution. Those are all standards of the Dogami permit that, in my opinion, you rely on the, the state agencies that are in charge of regulating those permits to implement them. You don't want to get into implementing or dealing with that. Those are your agencies that are meant to deal with it. So we are applying our criteria for zoning ordinance, we're not going into whether air pollution permit from Dogami is adequate, or whether or not it will be enforced. So that's why I bring this, this up. Okay, seven, areas subject to natural hazards. The area is not identified as being prone to natural hazards. The county has ability to close roads as long as adequate detours exist and are maintained during closures. Dogami permit, this is an example, the permit addresses a need for slope stabilization and wildfire mitigation measures that need to be taken at each active mining site in the state. Goal eight, recreational needs, property is not considered an asset for serving recreational needs. Goal nine, economic development generally applies to employment lands, so commercial and industrial lands, subject to properties EFU and surrounded by EFU. It's not conflict with anything in goal nine. All right. Goal 10, housing, this generally applies to rural residential lands and all policies directed at those lands. The proposal does not conflict with goal 10. Goal 11, public facilities, this is planned, developed, timely, orderly, efficient arrangement, public facilities. These are mostly focused on your urban areas and the waste management businesses. Does not conflict with goal 11. All right, goal 12, there's a lot of contention about whether or not the proposal meets that because of the road being closed. So 16 says, shall protect the function of existing planned roadways as identified in the transportation system plan. So that's where you need to decide whether the detour is adequate and, or not. County shall include consideration of proposal's impact on existing or planned transportation in all land use decisions. Shall protect the function in existing planned roadways through appropriate land use regulations. So those are applied through your zoning ordinance. Okay, next one. Energy conservation proposal does not conflict, urbanization does not conflict. Okay, so this, another set of approval criteria from, for any amendment, you need to show whether or not the amendment significantly affects a transportation facility. So this is again where the opponents contend that traffic impact studies should be completed, and that this criteria is not met when the road is closed. And, and we've been through all these, these steps. And would, would the, would it reduce the level of service below the minimum acceptable level in the transportation system plan? So it's a really, this, it's a tough thing to say whether a closure every five to 15 years for three weeks reduces the level of service below the minimum acceptable level. You know, usually I, you look at this in terms of, if you put a Walmart at the intersection, is it gonna make the intersection not operating at an acceptable level, right? And it's pretty simple, produces as many trips, it doesn't, you have to improve it, right? But here, it's this intermittent closure, how, how significant is that? Is it reducing it below your minimum level? And then further is directing it, the traffic to the detour reducing that, the capacity of that road below your minimum. Okay, next one. Now there we go. Okay, so that, that's the criteria. These are the, the currently proposed conditions of approval.
Have these come from the planning commission?
Yes, well, and that's a good point here. The planning commission recommended denial based on not having enough information, but they did recommend these conditions if you chose to approve. So these ones are, are pretty straightforward, solid waste disposal, fire suppression shall be kept on site, shall be compliance with all applicable laws, site inspection, access roads, and the new access road will require a permit from the county roadmaster, any new access on, to a county road requires that. This, the, this is where ODOT has, it's not a private easement, ODOT has condemned the property for this easement, or for this access, so that, second part of that doesn't apply. Restoration, the permit will restore the area to natural state and per the Dogami requirements. Interim restoration consists of grading, seating, control rooms, safety rooms, and overgrown stockpiles. Noise and dust control, they need to adhere to the DEQ noise standard and noise control regulations. Permitty shall provide dust control mitigation and to this site and access roads and provide that mitigation plan to the director. Hours of operation, is allowed to work at all hours, all days of the week in order to facilitate less road closures and nighttime work on freeway maintenance. Lighting provisions, they have, shall be, any outdoor lighting shall be hooded and directed, says not to shine directly on adjoining property. Notification of onsite projects, this details who gets notified and that it's 45 days in advance. All right. Periodic review, within 45 days of each active use shall, written update shall be provided. Report should include the amount of aggregate mined, any information about conflicts or complaints, and this report will be forwarded to the planning commissioner of county court. So that is intended to make sure they're following rules, you understand how much resource is left there after each active use, and then give the planning director some info for the next time the permit comes up for approval. Repair damage, so we went through this one with the planning commission in detail. And there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of confusion about the steps of operation for the repair damage, so this explains it, that before reopening the road, the road must be made traversable and provide adequate capacity for road users. Permitty shall gain approval from the Gillum County Roadmaster before reopening the road to ensure it meets county policies. So in other words, you have your, your three-week window to be closed. They do the work, within that three-week window, they meet with the county roadmaster, explain how they're gonna reopen the road, get approval from the county roadmaster before reopening it. And that all happens in that, that time period. Then, before the completion, so then the road is traversable and provides adequate capacity while during the interim between when they blasted and when they're gonna do the active maintenance project. Then after the active maintenance project, permitty shall meet with the roadmaster and determine any necessary repairs that need to be made to bring the road up to pre-project condition. And permitty agrees to make any necessary repairs to restore the road within 60 days of meeting with the roadmaster. I think there, we could reduce that, that window too. It's likely, ODOT has said it's likely they'll have all the equipment on site during the maintenance project, so that'd be the time they would do the improvement. I added the line, this applies to county roads used for detoured routes as well. So there's, if there's a bunch of impacts onto heritage, the roadmaster has these same steps to go through to ensure that those roads are improved to pre-project conditions. All right, 13, site layout, batching shall only occur in existing processing area. Rock crushers will not operate in excavation areas south of Quinton Canyon Road, so south and west. All of that operation has to take place in the processing area down lower. Road closures and delays, this is a good one, we went through a lot with the planning Vehicles traveling in Quinton Canyon Road may be delayed for no more than 20 minutes without prior notification and adequate detours in place. Landowners shall be notified 45 days in advance. If extended multi-day closures are required, they'll be planned to occur between, so this is actually, the planning commission proposed a narrower window than October to June.
They went November to January.
November, three, January, I believe.
Right.
And ODOT has requested.
November to March.
November to March. And this is where we get back to that seasonality issue, can we minimize the conflict with agricultural operations and the seasonality of them? Road closures can occur for no more than 21 consecutive days, and no more than one closure is allowed for each major use of the site. So each five to 15 years, they get that 21 days, and that's it, they can't do it multiple times during each project.
And those are consecutive days, so we're talking three weeks period, three calendar.
Yep. And again, the road needs, at day 22, the road would need to be traversable and have, provide the capacity it currently does.
What time of year does the up to 20-minute delays take place in? Is it within that window, that timeframe too?
That's anytime. So anytime, if they're gonna propose, if they're gonna be causing delays, they would have to have notified it and set up a detour route.
Right, but can they cause those delays between June and September?
Yes, yeah, because they've set up the detour route at that point. Yes.
Sort of 45-day, because for some reason I was thinking that the, the 21-day would be the max on the road closure, and then, and then them crushing the rock and doing whatever would be like 45 days max. So I was thinking that this whole thing would take place during the winter, spring months, but no?
The maintenance project's likely to be in the summer, so June, June, July is when paving projects.
I was just sure about that, thank you.
And during that time, there's gonna be delays. ODOT has stated that the delays are less than five minutes, and that there'll be flaggers out and truck traffic can get through, but it's the closure window that I've focused on for the seasonality. Detours during the closures, a detour route would need to be established, and Heritage Lane would be that detour route. Confirmation, the county roadmaster, the detour route is adequate or required. Cultural resources, this is, if cultural artifacts are observed, the shippo or tribes will, the work must cease in the development area and assessed. So this again is relying on the state historic preservation office to do their job in ensuring the protection of those cultural resources, of which there are cultural resources on the site that have been identified. I know shippos in a letter of concurrence that the project won't impact those resources. Okay, next one. Okay, so that is, those are the conditions. This is just the meeting process side, so we, you, the steps here are whether you have adequate information here to determine whether the criteria is met. That's your, your step one. And step two then is, well, it's kind of iterative, goes back and forth on what, and then what are the conflicts, what's the impact area, can they be minimized, just to simplify it. So that's, that's all the information, it's a ton of information, and, and there's, almost every issue is contained in, almost every criteria. So what would you like to do, what process would you like to take next to go back through? Do you wanna?
Can you go back a couple slides?
Yeah.
To the one with that one right there?
That one?
Will you leave that up?
Yeah, well, you all let me know, do you wanna go back through the steps?
So we could go back to each one of the steps that, and, and deal with each one of those individually. I kind of think one of the first things we have to do is go back to the impacted area, because, you know, if we decide that the impacted area is different than, than we, a lot of these other things are gonna be.
Depending on.
Depending on what that impact area is.
Yep.
Should we take maybe a five, 10-minute break? Okay, so why don't we take a 10-minute break? We'll get back here and get started at 10:40.
Yep.
Okay, good, everybody's good with that, so recess, 10 minutes. Okay, we've taken our 10-minute break, it is now 10:41, we'll get back into, we're completely finished with the staff report, I think now what we'll do is move back into steps and maybe discuss those when we're done.
Yes, please. Go ahead. Step one.
Yeah.
Step one is.
Step one was.
Well, let's determine that it's complete, which was done. Step two, determine the signif, site significance and classification. So step two is really where the question over adequate material provided, it sounds like you all were feeling like what was provided seems adequate. Okay, so let's move on to step three. Identify impact area in all conflicts with existing uses. So I guess I, I've laid out what's there, you, I'm really summarizing what's in here, you know, there's hundreds of pages about this. So if there's stuff I didn't put up here, I tried to focus in on some of the main points that were made. So thoughts about expanding the impact. So thoughts about expanding the impact area.
So 1A, that is that in our zoning ordinance? Is that's in there now?
Yes.
So the impact area shall be large enough to include uses listed in subsection B of this section where it shall be limited to 1,500 feet from the boundaries. So kind of where I'm going, and Ruben, I guess I'm leaning more towards you on this particular question. That is in our zoning ordinance. If we change that particular wording for this particular, are we going to end up with a, setting a precedent that every significant aggregate site that we would have would fall, that would need to be changed?
No, we wouldn't. It's fact specific. Our ordinance says that we are limited to the 1,500 feet except where there's factual information that's adequate to indicate that it needs to be expanded.
Okay.
So it would be, it's a case by case basis and it would not set a precedent that we have to do that.
Okay, just want to make sure that we got that.
So we address each of those upon its things, upper B.
Yeah, ODOT contends that they have provided evidence that shows the impact area should remain at 1,500 feet. So I guess it would be each one of those that we contend that the impact area should be extended up to seven miles due to the impacts of road closures and detours.
So now, if we start with the road and ODOT has said that that alternate road would be brought to a standard that would be above what exists right now, is that, is that what was stated? And would that, would that resolve that conflict?
That it would be an adequate detour, so, and you said it would be, what were the wording used?
Well, that it would be brought back to the level that it was before.
Yes.
Well, I thought they were going to give us, that road is going to be raised to a higher level.
Are you talking about Heritage Lane or?
Heritage Lane, yes, the alternate.
No, it's, no, it will be, the way the conditions are written is that it would be returned to its pre-project condition and that it would be maintained to be adequate to serve as a detour. The transportation system plan has that road, recommends that road is upgraded to minor collector and improved. Those projects are done when funding is available. The, yeah, so that's not, unless you wanted to condition it that way, we could look at the ability to require the minor, require that project now to accommodate this, but it's a little bit of a stretch because they're both considered local roads now, so they're both classified in the same classification now in the TSP.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Does that answer that?
Seven miles basically would incorporate everything that's the detour.
Right.
But the fact that it's, it's going to be maintained and conditioned similar to what it is right now should make it reasonable for uses and old.
Yeah, and that, yeah, so you, I think you're right on the right, you're following the right logic, trying to determine whether there is a conflict there.
Right.
And that's what justifies expanding it. So.
So really, the use of that Heritage Lane road is, is for the 21 day period of the closure.
Right.
And then other times, it, I believe it set up their 20 minutes, which was conditions of approval number 14, of which I think a 20 minute wait is too long. That would be during the seasonal work that would be, I mean, whenever ODOT was in there doing.
The seasonal part.
The paving or whatever.
Oh, I thought they had five minutes, they were saying.
Five minutes, that's not what we.
Yeah.
Right, that's not what's in the conditions of approval.
Yeah, so we could reduce that.
ODOT said they can reduce it, and I'm kind of thinking that that would be one step that we could handle right now, going back to the COA number 14 and cutting that from 20 minutes down to, you know, five or 10 maximum. So that would be, I mean, you know, for instance, they're doing it at the time that maybe Blake is harvesting out there, that his truck would not set any more than five minutes waiting for. So are we comfortable with going back to the five minutes on number 14?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we extended the up to seven miles. The bringer, the road cannot handle, I mean, let's say this happens in November to, let's say February, what ODOT is proposing.
Right.
That's when the traffic is going to be on Heritage Lane.
Right.
The people who are going to be impacted is anybody who is living on Heritage Lane. I don't think, I mean, I, I don't know, and really I think the impact is only going to be when they decide to go west.
When they what?
When they decide to go west, for instance, they're getting onto the freeway to go west.
But.
That's, that's when I feel the impact would probably happen to anybody living on Heritage.
Right, for the 21 days.
For the 21 days. And so that, that's why I mentioned that, that incorporates that seven mile radius around that. I think the only time, what I guess what I'm saying is that those people living on Heritage Lane, the only time they're going to be impacted is during the 21 days and when they are going for their, their location to a location farther west from where.
And the impact would be pretty minimal for those that live on the east end of Heritage Lane.
Well, yeah, I don't know, because I don't know what they're customarily would be doing if, if, you know.
Well, in terms of the time, capable to go one way versus the other.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, basically, it's people that are, that are clear down at the intersection of the Quentin and Heritage Lane west. It's that area there that's free, where the impact is on the east. And towards feet.
But I guess if, if you were somebody who was living, say, from Blaylock Canyon Road halfway down on Heritage Lane and you're wanting to make a trip to the DOWs and Quentin Canyon Road is closed, you're going to be going the opposite way and there's, there'll be additional traffic that you normally would not hit coming in from Blaylock Canyon Road heading to a farther west location. I know it's stretching, but I'm just trying to get all of this and how people will be affected with it and whether seven miles is an appropriate number to have up there. Should it be more, should it be less? It's 1,500 feet.
I guess here too, it's whether a traffic impact study that's really specific about number of trips or capacity of those roads would be, help you determine that too is an option. It's, ODOT has submitted quite a bit of information about this, the adequacy of the road and the number of trips that are impacted.
On our transportation system plan, Heritage Lane was one to be, you know, improved in the future.
There it is, we have said some improved too, but I'm not sure how that fits with the time frame of this.
Right.
But, but the seven miles, that's the whole Heritage Lane?
Pretty much, yeah. It would be from Quentin Canyon Road to, to Blaylock Canyon Road.
Blaylock, yeah.
I mean, I've driven it many times, I just, you know, trying to remember exactly.
But also, if you expand that area, then it opens up a whole nother realm of things that you have to deal with, of anybody that wants to have any new proposed uses within that area.
Correct, correct. Bring us right back to almost square one here. No ways is it issue. Just vibration, air polluting. I'm not sure about the, you know, the air polluting chemicals, that would be really more of a DQ. Right. Assessing other things, yeah. So I'm not sure that that is something that, if DQ approves it, I believe they have.
They have to follow DQ standards.
Standards are brighter.
Right.
And in the staff report that you prepared, you thought of the criteria as that by ODOT?
I, but the opponents have submitted information, they feel like supports that there are impacts, so. My staff report was written a while ago. I'm trying to give you all, do you all have all the info to interpret?
So we make that, yeah.
Yeah, the impacts, the noise impacts are really specifically addressed by the opponents in that letter from August 15. The vibration impacts are, claims that it would impact wells in the area. And that a groundwater study should be included.
That should go back to the mining.
The gommet.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I am not sure on that detail of who would, or Oregon Water Resources, if you're impacting wells offsite that far, I am not sure.
I mean, seven miles is a long ways to. Then again, I, you know, if I lived in that area, if I lived in that area, it might be.
Didn't ODOT also submit a deal on the, on the noise? They have some type of diagram.
Yes.
Show the noise.
Yeah, they submitted a noise report and they, their report found that the noise levels at the house were not, did not exceed the threshold, the noise standard that is applied here. They also felt like the nearest source of water for the cows was far, far enough away that it didn't exceed the threshold.
Right.
The opponent's letter from, from DSA states. Okay, here's the summary finding from that letter. DSA has conducted numerous Gold 5 noise studies for mining operations and has routinely looked out beyond 1,500 feet to ensure that noise radiating quarry operations will be in compliance with DQ noise rules. Factual information in the noise contour map establishes that noise levels at the Mies residence is a significant potential conflict beyond the distance of 1,500 feet. The noise contour map submitted in Posegate letter shows noise levels high enough near the Mies residence to conclude that it is possible, if not likely, that the loudest hour noise levels would exceed DQ nighttime hour noise limits. And with the inclusion of noise sources such as the rock drill and dozer at higher elevations, also possible, if not likely, that noise levels at the Mies residence may even exceed DQ daytime hour noise limits. Therefore, staff report incorrectly concludes that ODOT has demonstrated noise impacts have been minimized. So they're saying that the noise study provided didn't address the blasting at the top of the hill and that that could potentially be louder and have impacts to that residence.
Yeah, I think it was, I viewed it as not only the blasting, but also the drilling too, you know, so we're talking, those two things, noise levels from those would be.
Yeah, and the Mies residence is just outside the 1,500 feet, so you need to expand that impact area. What's difficult is there's not a noise study provided saying, here's where you go to from the opponents. They're saying, it looks like at the, this I'm interpreting, when looking at ODOT, it looks like it's pretty close at the Mies residence, and if you consider the drilling and blasting, it would probably exceed it, but they don't have the studies to show that. So if you expanded the impact area, then we would be asking for more information from ODOT to show that the noise levels in that expanded impact area are not exceeding.
Well, the drilling takes, is, happens over a length of time, fairly short period, and the blasting is just a matter of seconds.
But again, you guys need to decide if you're limiting to that fifteen hundred feet or going outside of it. If you limit it to fifteen hundred feet, then it's really not something to be considered. So if you expand it, then it needs to be considered.
And what we're talking about is the twenty-one day period of time.
And, and what about during the forty-five day period?
Forty.
Is it just the twenty-one day or is it?
Well, the noise would come during the maintenance, and so the noise will come during that blasting period, and then the noise will happen also during the batching plant operation.
Crushing.
And crushing.
How long a timeframe frame is the batching, crushing take?
Likely ninety days, I would say.
So I guess really what I'm, I'm not sure about the noise level from the operation of the crushing equipment and the batching. I mean, we're sort of familiar with what that noise would be. It's, it's the drilling and the blasting that I, I don't think that, based on what I've seen here, that, and what we, the information that we got from the opponents here, is really saying that the, that the noise level that was, test that was done was, didn't take into consideration the drilling and the blasting. It did take into consideration the crushing and the operation of the facility, of the, batching. It did take that into consideration, but it didn't take the, the other two, the drilling and the blasting into consideration, and the noise level that it would be. And I guess my question, or the way I understand everything, is that's going to happen, let's say it's, it's four days of drilling, two hours of blasting, and then the rest of it is going to be, you know, clearing the road. Is that realistic, Mike? I mean, you're, you're probably a little bit more familiar with the drilling than I am.
Less than two hours.
Two hours, yeah. You know, yeah, we're talking seconds, really with the blasting aspect of things, but the drilling is definitely going to be a period of time that I think the noise level will outreach what ODOT has stated, or the organization did the noise level. Within that fifteen hundred feet is, is twenty-one days, or, you know, four or five, whatever it takes to do drilling.
We don't really know how long, how long does it take them to do drilling?
I, unless, I, Commissioner, I don't, I really do not know. I have, I have no idea. You know, that would be one that Dewey could probably answer for us.
So, so what Dewey Kennedy estimated, it would be done over about a two-week period? Dewey said about a two-week period for the drilling?
Right. So then, then we would have the blasting and then another, you know, five days of, seven days clearing.
So was the work that was done recently on the road there, is that entered as any part of the, the testimony here from the opponents, I mean, yeah, the opponents, the ODOT?
Is it entered in the, I'd describe it briefly. I'd describe it briefly.
Okay.
The.
Because there was blasting and drilling involved there.
And, yeah, ostensibly a detour or flagger or not. I'm not sure what your county policies are, and I'm not sure if the road has been fully repaved or not, so.
But that activity has occurred already, similar to what we're talking about here, except in a larger, a little larger scale. And at a time that would be similar to when ODOT has proposed their activity?
Yeah, I believe that happened in the spring.
Yeah. As far as I know, the road department never received any, you know, there was no complaints received on that situation. But Kim, I'm, I'm wondering if that is, whether we can use that, since it was mentioned, whether we can use that in, in this, helping us make this decision?
Not really.
Not really.
My opinion is that, that twenty-one day closure is, that's more of a significant event, and there you can be doing.
I'm not talking about the closure, I'm talking about the noise impact.
Okay.
And so we're.
Yeah, okay, I hear your saying.
Yeah.
I would say yes, it would be.
Okay.
I, my, this, that's my feeling.
Yes.
There's a little bit of history that is involved with it, but it definitely is not at the same scale.
Oh, no, not, not completely, but it is. But probably in terms of the level of noise, it would be very, very much the same.
I want to jump in here though and just ask that you consider just what's on the record, what's been presented as evidence here, and not bring in extrinsic things that are beyond just basic common knowledge.
Okay, okay, okay.
So it's just common knowledge? I mean, it was mentioned that this project happened.
A different project that where evidence hasn't been submitted, we should not consider?
Yeah, and the factual information is the ODOT submitted their noise report, the opponents contend what's in there. That's what should be used, it's a good point.
Fifteen hundred feet.
Yay, nay?
So, so you're saying that, that ODOT didn't really mention the drilling aspect of this, but we're also talking about a couple weeks every five to fifteen years?
It's, yeah, it's a very technical question of whether what ODOT submitted meets the DQ noise standards. Whether those, noise impacts will extend beyond fifteen hundred feet. ODOT claims they won't. The opponents claim that the levels are high enough in this initial report, and with consideration of the higher, the noise levels higher up, it should be extended. Need noise study done.
So if we, if we were to decide that fifteen hundred feet wasn't adequate, do we just go right to seven miles, or do we try to figure out some, some amount in between?
Some amount in between, based on the factual information. So here's where you could say, based on what's in the record, we want to extend it to seven miles because they've made a case for that. Or you could say, we don't have enough information to determine how far we, we agree with the noise contention and we need to expand, we see a need to expand the impact area. That's an option.
I don't even see the seven miles as the ceiling, you could go farther if you felt that was appropriate, but just the, the opponents are asking for it to go up to seven.
And just to clarify, the seven miles is based on the detour route, not the noise?
Right.
So that's two separate things.
Traffic.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to extend it beyond the fifteen hundred feet without more information on the noise.
Yeah, the.
I think that's really questionable, especially considering the length of time that this noise will be occurring.
Right.
If it was something like, yeah, like happening day in and day out, that's a whole different story than this very short period of time.
So I think what, what I'm hearing here is that the period of time that maybe we're talking about, that the drilling, noise and blasting is going to be two weeks, based on information we received from our roadmaster?
Yeah, they, in the ODOT letter too, they detail it out on page three.
I'm reading for that.
Timeline for excavation project, grading the easement road, removing overburdened preparation, in preparation for drilling, a week, drilling in advance of the shot, two to three weeks, the actual blast takes seconds, removal of the rock from above to the county road, across to the quarry, three weeks. Crushing operation would be variable depending on the size of the project, but would likely be a month to six weeks. Timing, it could be taking place at the same time as the rock being removed from the road, dumped into the quarry, or it could take place later, just depends on the project schedule. Batching operations, variable depending on the size of the project, but on a big freeway project, one to two months. So in other words, that, the drilling in advance of the shot for two to three weeks, the blast, seconds, removal of rock, I don't think would be that loud from the road down below. Crushing operation would be, and batching would be louder, and those are six, up to six weeks plus two months, so, twelve weeks maximum.
But, but that part is.
That part's covered in the.
In the, in the.
Noise.
All right, right.
And with what they.
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred feet. Is it, isn't enough for the drilling, two to three weeks? I mean, this is fifteen months on just number one.
Yeah.
So, I guess.
Yes, I, I need to leave at noon, I have another hearing too, so would be good to get through this and order the list of questions.
Right.
Request for more information.
Fifty-nine feet?
Just as far as the noise goes, I mean, we haven't, we're not talking about traffic yet, just noise?
Just, just noise right now, that's, that's as far as we've gone. You know, yeah. Really, I guess we could deal with all of those, you know, it's the noise, we're also talking about dust, vibration, air polluting, and the noise impacts to cows should be considered inflecting. So really, we're talking about all three of those, whether the fifteen hundred feet is adequate.
Yes.
For virtually all of that. And, and what I think really, I, I don't, I mean, based on sort of where we're at, we've, we've got the T DQ report that says the fifteen hundred feet during those.
Right.
The, is, is okay, it's that tricky part of the drilling and blasting that. And, and really, that's outside, in, in reading this, I, I knew it, but it's, it's outside the twenty-one day period of time, that, that really, the twenty-one days of the road closure is just strictly to move, move the materials from the road.
Right.
So I didn't quite have that clear in my head, so. Again, I guess fifteen hundred feet for the noise. We're good with that? Okay, all right. So we can, that, how about as far as, I, I think that pretty much covers all four issues that we have up there. We, we could initially go back to the cows, should they be considered as, you know, the noise being an issue with them also? You know, I, I guess this is where I could go back to, you know, the situation that we've already done there, which Ruben said we shouldn't consider, but it has been a practice in the area, but.
Right.
But here again, I, I don't know about the timeframes of when the county did it, as opposed to when this is going to be set, and, and it could be that at that time, there were no cows in the area when the county did it. I, you know, I don't know, so we almost need to, I say bring it in, but with that, we got to throw it out, so. So that kind of brings us to the window two, a period of time that they could do this. The planning commission said November to January, ODOT has asked for January to March. Is that correct?
Let me double check that.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was March was when.
Was it end date?
November to March.
November to March.
And then November to January was the planning commission request.
Through March, through January?
So ODOT's request is January to March.
Through March?
Between, excuse me, between November and March, is the way it's worked.
So that includes the whole month of November and the whole month of March?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And then the planning commission's recommendation was November and January, so basically cutting it from six months down to three months.
I'd be a pretty short window.
Yeah, I'm good, I definitely feel that the window needs to be shortened, I'm just not so sure, I, if, you know, based on what would be normal agricultural practices around, I, it could very well be that, you know, cows would, would be in that, I, I mean, I, I don't know. Many times, you know, you move your cow closer to where it's, it's easier for you to make sure the water's good, make sure all of that.
Right.
Under the circumstances there, I would think that it, it may be the cows would still be in there in November, but I doubt that they would be there in December, January. I don't know. Because I don't, you know, I don't know the practices that these that are out there, the people that are out there. Did we, we see testimony on that, did we? Um, I know that there was testimony, but I don't think that it really comes back to the exact dates of the noise.
I don't remember it.
Specific. Yeah. There is a. Yeah, they, they are talking about it in relation to the road closures. There is more detailed one in here somewhere.
So there are some other issues with cows, maybe, maybe we could, we could pick that up a little bit later too. So I think what we decided on this, get your point, this may be step three, is that what we made at the fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Okay. So that moves us on to what would be number four. Okay. So this is step.
Yeah.
Again.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where you guys want to be.
Well, I think we kind of decided. Well, I think we kind of decided three A and B have.
A, yeah, let's go to three B, just.
Yeah, and I think that was, you know, we're deciding the, whether the impact area should be the seven miles or at the fifteen hundred feet. ODOT has asked that the cows not be considered conflicting use. I guess.
At fifteen hundred feet?
Yeah. We, we kind of decided the fifteen hundred feet. It seems to me like on the next slide, number four, or what would be.
And now we're to the local conflicts with local roads.
Right, so this is where. They, you know, I think that. That goal twelve transportation is not now when Quinton Canyon Road is closed. You know, I think there's some validity to that in a way. If I remember our goal twelve. You know, it's, it, it's been a long time since I could look at it, but it seems to me that there was some emergency coverage, you know, emergency services that, you know, we needed to make sure that those things were taken care of. In other words, if there's a fire in one of those houses out there, we need to make sure that the fire trucks and everything can get there to deal with the situation. Yeah, I know.
That, that, that's, that, if the house is on fire out there, that fire truck is just there to protect the other buildings. Put a toilet stand.
Yeah, well. I guess if I looked out there, I'd want to feel a little bit differently, you know. But, you know, it would be kind of, I thought I would want to have them there as quickly as possible.
Oh, sure, they're there as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But also there's, you know, healthcare, all of these are part of that. Now, you know, ODOT contends that heritage detour is adequate and proposed to be improved to might collect transportation service plan. I, I was a little surprised. I, I guess the ODOT estimate of nineteen to sixty-seven daily, average daily. That, and I assume we're talking Heritage Lane, and that would be from, you know, the time, the moment it leaves Fue la Canyon Road up and down. Sixty-seven seemed like an awfully high number, but.
I, I think that's on Quinton Canyon. So that, that would be the additional traffic that would instead go to Heritage.
Okay, okay.
Yep. So the question is, does Heritage have the capacity to handle the sixty-seven?
Yes.
Oh, and we're just talking about during three weeks.
Yeah.
Every five, fifteen years.
Yes.
Well, yes, and then, and if you take into account when the sixty-seven was done, I think that, that would.
Way into it also.
Way into it too, because it was not during that period of time of closure. Yeah, you may get sixty-seven during harvest time, but how many do you get during that time period that could be closed?
Remembered.
Yeah, that's what ODOT provided, that nineteen trip, eighteen was, I think, entered in March.
But even at sixty-seven, it's not, that number's not a problem.
Okay.
It's more than, it's more the time, timeframe of, of, I mean, the additional time for emergency services. That's the biggest thing back. How do you get around that? You don't do the project. You have lifeline coming in.
Why would assume, yeah, okay. See where you're going with that. Okay. So I, I really think we're all in agreement that Heritage can, or Heritage Road could, can handle the additional traffic. So that really got me kind of. It's a matter of whether it meets what's in goal twelve. I guess during a, you know, three week period of time, it doesn't meet what's in goal twelve.
Well, if you're saying that detour is adequate, then it does.
Okay. Okay, all right, so let's move on.
This is the goal five.
Economic, social, environment, and energy.
Well, this is the whether or not there's other goal five resources within the fifteen foot impact area.
That's a fairly subjective.
Yes.
Yeah.
Idea there.
Well, if they are, it's clear which ones have been protected. So I think in this, in when, for this criteria, it's clear that there aren't other goal five protected resources here. Think when we talk about, does this meet your comp plan? That's when the question about how to interpret the coming out comes up.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? It's sort of confusing, but.
Well. So which, so which part of the, the side one?
Right now, you're deciding, are there goal five protected resources in the impact area? My recommendation's pretty clear, there's none.
No, there are not.
Yes. So I think that one is straightforward. Here's, this is the most complicated one, identifying conflicts with agricultural practices.
So here we were talking about maybe shortening the window.
Mm-hmm.
Down to what the planning commission recommended?
Yeah, I was, you know, I, to me, I still have some reservations as to, and I wish I got more information on this. The only thing that I see being, as far as agriculture go, going is, is the feeding and watering of cows. Cattle that are on that particular area. I didn't, you know, I don't know, what do we have, whether cows are wintered there? You know, I don't know.
Well. Because it is a lower elevation during winter time, this is more light than that.
Yeah, I agree, I, I agree.
Again, how much you can impact as the noise has on, on the livestock is still a question.
From a, a letter from Phillipi Ranches.
From who?
Phillipi. Phillipi Ranches, our cattle are hauled in during early January and are there until mid, till late June.
Okay, so.
And their cow, calf operations. They contend are very sensitive to loud noises and lights at night. They have a condition that Quinton can be closed during certain times of the year, including November to March is a nonstarter. We spray our wheat in January and February, have chemicals delivered. And we should receive testimony on that.
Did, did ODOT say something about pushing it back till November fifteenth because of fertilizing or something? Did they say that at the last meeting?
They did say they're what they want to work with farmers to find the window.
Right.
But I think pretty mu, the farmer testimony is that there isn't a window.
Right.
Fertilizing is, is heavy loads of chemicals. Not so much. Yeah, you're hauling water, you're not hauling that area. Chemicals themselves. A huge lot.
Sort of leaning on you as far as.
I mean, the fertilizing practice definitely, that's in the timeframe. Could be, but ODOT stated they're work that timeframe out. I mean, and it, and it changes, you know, sometimes you have a window in January. Other times it's in some February, whatever, and it's a lot earlier down there.
Than it is.
Here. That's, I mean, I've, I've seen activity any day, you know, any month of the year. Ag applications.
So is the three month window appropriate? I mean, we're talking November to through January. November, December, January, three months. Of, of a period of time that they would shut it down for twenty-one, we're, we're saying, okay, within this period of time, work with an agricultural entity, November. I mean, my guess, just based on my experience of living here, the period of time that I have, I, I'm seeing, you know, really from Thanksgiving to just after New Year's Day. There would be the ideal time to be able to accomplish the twenty-one day shutdown.
The, the largest window with, with, you know, with restrictions would be more, probably would be more flexible in terms of.
Yeah.
You say, well, it can only happen, I mean, yeah, November and first January. Really made it.
And I, and I think that's where ODOT is coming from, is that, you know, that there's, the spring, it could happen in January. Okay, we, we won't do it based on, but again, maybe nothing's going to happen in February. So that would be a good time, but.
To me, I, I would, I would make a narrow window down when it could be resolved between the landowners, operators, and ODOT. But that is stated in, in the conditions, right?
That's not clear and objective enough.
It's not clear and objective enough? Okay.
We would just get into a situation where the landowners would not agree to any time. So either there, you can find there is not a time that conflict is too great, can't be minimized, application denied. ODOT could go do that work, or you find, or you establish the window.
Okay, so we go with the window, November, January?
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with that. That's a three month window.
And you could put in a condition that notice needs to be given, like a certain, a certain time to the.
I think there was something, I think I did a forty-five day notice.
Forty-five day prior notice is in there now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so November. November through January? November two to January? November.
Well, so let's go November one to February or July, January thirty-first. That's a three month period of time. Okay, so specify that will be. Okay. I believe that, you know, deals with. Noise, we go with, firstly, everything. Have we taken care of step three? Yeah, I think we took care of step three completely.
ODOT did testify that this, the upcoming project wouldn't meet this window. So you're, and I also want to point out, we need to base this in factual. So we're saying November first to January thirty-first for the closure period because because, because agricultural practices are active other times of the year, shouldn't have the least impact.
Right.
Right?
Okay, that's going to be clear.
What window did they need for this next project?
They wanted to go to March.
All the way?
Yeah.
No, through March.
Through March. They wanted six months.
Maybe five. Through March would be five.
Uh, five, yeah. Thank you for my map direction.
That's fine.
No, I appreciate it. I explained, I'm okay. I had six months, three and six months in my mind, so.
That's my mind's exercise.
Oh, okay, well, no, I think I have. Okay, so I, I believe we've done step three pretty well.
Taken care of.
Okay. And it's, we have twenty minutes for five more, I think, so.
Okay, so this is where we determine whether those conflicts, you're kind of doing this.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
As we're going, so can they be minimized? You're working your way through minimizing
Right.
the conflicts. So next slide. This is where started to detail out the seasonality, so we've addressed that for the road closures.
Right.
The reasonable detour, we've addressed. The notice. Uh, we talked about, and improvements to detour roads is in the conditions currently.
Okay.
Yeah, other mitigation measures for road closures that you want to consider.
Okay, now.
So road.
Repairs.
Impacts, yeah, operations. They have to notice forty-five days in advance. The roadmaster can request an engineering analysis. And the repairs need to be made before reopening the road. So all that is detailed in your conditions. Mitigation measures for the other impacts proposed by opponents. So go back and forth on this again, so need to determine what, what, inside the fifteen hundred foot impact area, what conflicts are there? There are not residences in that area. Any future residences would have signed the waiver, so that minimizes that. The noise impacts to cows, is that issue? So deciding whether there's a way to minimize, whether that is in fact a conflict and whether you need to minimize it somehow.
So.
And I don't, I'm not sure how, how you could. Fencing or, I, I'm not sure what would keep.
I don't think any evidence was presented regarding how to minimize the.
No.
Impacts to cows. Other than expand the study to see what.
Yeah.
Was the real issue there.
Well, it's minimized in terms we're only talking a short period of time, but that noise occurs, and that's.
That's, well, the short period of time for the closure is the blasting and moving the rocks over. The batch plant and the crushing is another, that, that will occur.
When the cattle are there.
Oh, I guess, yeah, they won't be there in the summer.
Right.
Okay.
So I wonder if it makes sense to limit the window for the maintenance, or for crushing and batching. To limit the window for that. Season, to address seasonality.
Is that something that's been done in other pits in the county?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh.
Yeah. Not aware of that in close.
Definitely not.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that we.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other impacts that we need to consider in minimization for them? I mean, the conditions have noise and dust control, fire suppression. Noxious weed control. So trying to get at those.
Right. So like weed control, we already have a contract with ODOT, don't we? And making sure that their pits and everything, that would, would this be an addition to what we normally would cover? So in other words, I mean, we get X number of dollars from them. Is that?
Right.
I know this may be a little bit.
Like we did with wind, the windmill construction firms. There was inspections of their equipment.
Coming in.
Coming in. Yeah. Right. Yeah, that kind of agreement could be written up.
And part of then, their requirements for their dogami permit to maintain that.
Yeah.
And they can contract with you, what you're saying? Or they do contract with you to do that.
I, I think they do, yeah, I believe they do now. I'm not positive of that, but. That's why I'm kind of looking into him.
Well, I know, you know, spot piles and pits.
Okay.
Okay.
And if they're not, I guess I'm, I'm in trouble.
Yeah. I think a big portion of that previous window is really handled by some of the state and federal agencies that, you know.
Yes.
We.
You know, they have contractors
Right.
that implement that.
Okay.
Okay, so this one, determine whether you can minimize conflicts with agricultural practices. So that's what you're what we've tried to do here with the proposed conditions. To check in though, will this, with those conditions, will this force a significant change in accepted farm, farm force practices? And significantly increase the cost? ODOT contends it doesn't, opponents contend it does. Do you feel that the conditions you have minimize that? So it's not a significant change or a significant increase in cost?
We were also talking about, and I don't know if this is the right time, but reducing that delay time on the, when the road is open from 20 minutes to, I mean, that's something we could do to also, right?
Yeah, the yes, condition number 14. May, vehicles traveling in a quid pro canian road may be delayed for no more than 20 minutes, it says. We talked about changing to five minutes. So that would reduce the cost of to the.
Right.
To, to be clear, it's more than 20 minutes without prior notification and a detour.
Yeah.
So you're, it's not saying they can only have it for 20 minutes, it's saying 20 minutes or you have to give notification and make sure that there's an adequate detour place.
Right, if you're not going to say you're going to stop people for more than five minutes, you have to go to.
Yeah. So you know, the timeframe that we're really talking about will be, you know, anywhere between when we had discussed what the harvest time is down in that particular area.
When is that? When is harvest exactly?
For them, it's in, you know, early July, possibly the end of June.
Two, three weeks.
Oh, yeah. One of the questions here is really, what, what is significant? What is that definition of significant?
Yeah.
That looks a little bit open here in this.
I completely agree. That's why I kept highlighting that, this, this phrase throughout. You know, the rest of this is really technical. The, this is the issue. And you have discretion in how you view this.
That's exactly your role.
Yeah.
You have a role in this, is determining.
What is significant?
Yes. With, with the evidence you've been given and the conditions that you've worked on. Have you minimized the impacts?
So here's kind of, I mean, you know, the way, and my concern if this is at five minutes, you're really talking 10 minutes period of time because a truck leaves the field full. Goes down, hits a five-minute barrier. Goes and dumps, comes back, hits a five-minute barrier again on the way back to the field. So. And, and based on my history in harvesting, 10 minutes sometimes can be.
What times do we, what timeframe would they be doing, would they be having these delays? What times would they have, be having project?
We don't.
In the warm months?
We don't limit it. The, from, it sounds like they have about a 12-week period between removal of rock. But the crushing and batching operations. So that's about a 12-week period. Likely April, June, maybe July. Depends on their schedule, and they need certain temperatures to do the work.
Right.
At night. Too. Most of this works at night. Does the hauling for
Well, if you want to, you want to put this five-minute delay in perspective. Consider sometimes the weight of the elevator is many times greater than that.
Sure.
Yeah. So I mean, that part is something that operatives have to take into consideration.
Yeah, the.
They just have to factor that into their system, their operation.
Philippi Ranch's letter said, estimated 10 minutes per load, average of 120 loads per year. Of which is 3,200 of, of expense. And Heritage Lane, they estimate 45 minutes extra to go around with 120 loads would be 14,000 of it.
Why would they have to go around on Heritage Lane?
Well.
When, during the detour, right? So that's assuming all the loads in the year.
But not during harvest or?
To put it in perspective.
Yeah, the only, like max. That example would be like max to.
Yeah, it's a 120 loads per year.
And they got stopped every time.
Yeah.
I, I'm saying majority of those 120 loads happen at harvest time. Right.
What's that?
A majority of those 120 loads would probably happen at harvest time. Of which, you know, that's where we get back to the five-minute delay of coming and going. Not, not the 21-day closure of. Does it significantly increase the cost of farm enforced practices? I guess that's kind of where we're at.
I, I wouldn't see it as significant.
I think during the timeframe, you know, I depended on when that happens, anytime in the month of July, I think it could be significant at that time. But I don't think, you know, any other time it would be. I don't know, you know, ODOT's scheduled. I believe they have to give, is the 45-day notice on that also that, you know, that, which would be the batching?
Any delay over five minutes that has to notice it.
Right.
For the detour available. Right, flaggers and elephants.
So I think that's, you know, pretty that's a good, you know, pretty significant time period of notification of.
But if you compare it to them doing a chip sealing on Highway 19, you get into the same delays there. You're in the same time period because that's usually, somebody's harvesting during that time period, you know. So do we just stop, we can't do chip sealing then?
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of.
Same approach.
It's going to be the same kind of, you know, there's delays there, same way.
Okay. So I, I think we're all in an agreement that it's not going to have a significant impact.
Okay, this, this is the waiver one. My recommendation is that you follow what's in your zoning ordinance. This is not the process to determining that your zoning ordinance is not.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
So all identified conflicts are minimized and we go through the ESE analysis. Uh, yeah, next. Determine the post-mining use, dogami permit includes reclamation plans, I think we're good there. Identify potential future uses. Do you have any other uses you want to identify as conflicting future uses other than the dwelling uses?
No.
No. We went through the ESE analysis. So then we're to the implementation. And then, let's go back, and then part of the implementation of implementing an amendment is that it meets the plan goals. So that's the last infra bit to go through. So the contentions are about that goal five. Warding or emberselled outcroppings. And then the natural resources goal about whether you should be implementing more about potential impacts from pollution, air pollution or groundwater impacts. So if you can go to the forward. Forward. Yeah, so I think we've covered the, the next one, please. So the goal five and the next one, this is the
Yeah.
The one-end issue. What are your thoughts on this one? I you know, my recommendation. If you want to protect these cliffs, you have the goal five process to do it. It hasn't been completed. So this application's now in front of us and they're not protected and the goal five in mind.
Well, I think it's factual, the, I mean, it's not the N R goal five, it's not not something that. So I, you know, I almost feel as if our hands are kind of tied in this without really addressing that. This is something that maybe we can ask the planning commission to look into, the planning director, I guess.
Right.
Take a look at. But at this time, based on what we have in front of us, I don't think it's.
I think.
Yeah.
I think another thing there is, it is, it has a conditional use approval. So it already has been identified as a site to some extent. So when you would do a search, to me, this would already be on your list of sites. So I, I wanted to add that.
Okay.
Okay. So goal six. Air and water, land resources quality. Do you want to add? You feel the conditions are adequate to minimize conflicts? Are you okay relying on these state agencies to implement their permits?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, so those were all the, the major comprehensive plant goals.
Okay.
Let's go to the conditions then. Any other conditions that we want to add? Need to add to, I meant the there's a condition number 17 in the staff report, noxious weed control that didn't make it on presentation. Applicant will ensure that reasonable precautions commensurate with current accepted practices will be implemented to prevent the spread of noxious weeds during active operations.
We talked about that before.
We did, yeah.
Was, condition was proposed by ODOT in their letter. And we've changed condition 14 to, from no more than 20 minutes to five minutes. The multi-day closures will be planned to occur between November 1st to January 31st. And that's, any other conditions to consider? Okay. So the
Okay.
Next step would be.
Approved.
Yes.
Based on the conditions of approval that we've laid out. Okay. So next, we've got to ask the court members if they feel they have enough information to make a decision.
Yes.
So with that being said, the, the public hearing on this matter is now closed, it's time for the county courts deliberations on this matter. So with that being said, the, the public hearing on this matter is now closed, it's time for the county courts deliberations on this matter. So, you know, I, it, it kind of gives me the instructions to ask each one of you if you have anything that you want to be able to say.
I think I've covered everything that I wanted to.
Okay. I, I believe that everything has been really covered as we went through each and every one of these steps. So, you know, I would be open to a motion. To approve.
Is it next meeting, right? That fast or what does the next mean?
I believe, I believe it's, September basically would be the next meeting, but I think Nick has some.
Yeah.
Right. So would be the following one, does it have three, two weeks?
Ruben, we, we tried to determine whether there's a time, we couldn't find.
There isn't a hard and fast time, but, um, for purposes of, um. If there were a denial and ODOT wanted to seek mandamus from the circuit court, there is a two week imposed delay for them to do that. So if there's a denial, um, then we should have that with the two weeks. If it's an approval, then it's not necessarily as much of an issue. Theoretically, ODOT could go to the circuit court and get a mandamus, but why would we get a mandamus when something would be approved? It would be fruitless, so.
So that would be the September 19th meeting?
So I guess I. Why, is there a specific reason why we need to have Nick there to?
Well, I just want to give him time to do what he needs.
So you need to write the findings, which the, ODOT has, uh, said they will assist with.
Yeah, I don't like to look at the findings just to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So otherwise that would be really fast.
So the 19th would not be, would be appropriate, I think, based on the 19th of September's meeting to.
Yeah, and then you.
Give that information to us, give us the opportunity along with legal counsel.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the goal would be to have findings to you the week ahead. So you can review them. And come to a decision at that.
Okay.
And I don't want to, I, the only thing, I mean, I've looked at the conditions and everything, I don't have any huge concerns. But there are some areas where I think the language just needs to be. Changed very slightly to make sure that their requirements are not high on the sky, if you can do this. Your area, a few mays need to be shals.
Okay.
So.
So we make that actual motion.
On the, on the 19th.
On the 19th, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So, I believe we're.
So you, no, you, you make a motion to recommend approval or denial. And direct staff to prepare revised findings and enabling ordinances.
Other page.
For the amendments to be adopted.
Okay.
And that, as Ruben pointed out, that stops the 180 day clock that we're up against too. As we've made a, a preliminary recommendation and we're coming back with the detailed findings. So, yeah, it's on page four for, and approval and denial.
Now, in the case of a motion to approve, do you think that it ought to be a direction to ODOT to prepare revised findings?
No, it's, I don't, it's up to the staff, the county department. Do them, and ODOT, the prevailing party can assist.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need to, to approve the application.
Yeah.
Yes.
With.
With, right.
I move we approve the, the application of ODOT for the Phillipi Canyon Quarry. Subject, set, yeah. Improve the application and with applicable approval criteria, subject to the, to imposing the conditions of approval detailed in the staff report.
Yeah, but, and then the rest is gone.
Okay.
Can they keep going here, the second part?
Yeah, then, and the county court, yeah, county court directs the staff to prepare the revised findings. Enable the ordinances for payments at the September 19th.
Okay. Okay.
Does that sound good now?
Yeah, I, I think so, the only thing I'm going to want is your, is the agenda that the top.
Oh, yeah. Yes, the key of all the.
Right, I, I left that on my desk and I can't. So do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Phillipi Canyon Quarry, ODOT's. Application for the Phillipi Canyon Quarry, subject to imposing the conditions of approval detailed in the staff report. The county court directs staff to prepare revised findings and enabling the ordinances for the amendments to be adopted at the subsequent county court meeting to be held on September 19th, 2018. Discussion.
Sounds like you've got it.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed. We just sold this down.
Cut you. Thank you.
I can't see thank you.
I know. It's all right. I understand. Okay.
I do have many questions, I would like to sit down and talk to you about this situation at some point because there is conflict of interest. It's very earned, the whole procedure wasn't done correctly from the very beginning and we were not given enough time for the process. And you've allowed ODOT to bully us once again. So if you guys don't hold their feet to the fire and make them do these things. You're going to lose my, you're going to lose my vote, I will advocate for you to all be removed. They have promised to do things in the past, they don't do them and nobody hold them accountable.
We'll work on it, Lori, we'll make sure that they do.
Working on isn't.
Yeah, we, we will make sure.